There are ways.
Well, since I've talked with you.
And you've talked with Lawrence.
Yeah, pretty good. And he's quite interested in me.
Okay.
Would you like to...
Um...
You've got more of this than we have.
There is some software. There is free software. It's been run over. It basically turns it into a TV broadcast station.
I'll just make that.
Four or five cameras, microphones. I do some things.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you? Your light in your car.
Your third light is blinking every time you turn your blinker on.
So where's the other one?
Yeah, you know the one on top of the can?
Right.
The third eye, the third eye? When you turn your left blinker on? Your left blinker blinks. But that thing also blinks.
Why?
I never knew it. You're doing your life. Tracy fix it for me. That's it? He's got a medical plan. He's got his whole guy.
I don't know.
You know, you might be wanting to think today. Well, I know.
Andy coming tonight.
Quentin O'Leary, Cooper Hill there.
There are a lot of hackers there.
The third eye is going to help.
Seventy years. First time I've ever heard that. And that wouldn't hold up. If someone like came in. But I'm gonna take it out, thank you.
We're running out of short paper.
No, we have like boxes and boxes of the papers that I want to use. It's all.
There's two of these.
Grow the book on the bottom of it.
All the only ones you sent me were two.
There was three of them, but this will serve very well. Because these two. Thank you, how are you? The book ends on nine extreme shows.
No, if you want the third one, go ahead.
So I don't have another.
No, no, I don't have any.
I'm taking it out of it.
These are the two most important.
Sorry.
You having a fine, fine day?
Not bad, actually. Got everything done, once we get done and come out, I can sit down and...
That's a good sign.
Well, there's somebody that'll break that. You need a... You need that.
Yeah, I'm gonna break it over at the time when the lights require it. Did you want me to go first?
I thought I'd go in second, but we can have him.
Second's fine. That's fine, thank you.
Doesn't have the same impact as an interview on TV.
Aren't you special?
Wow, I get the feeling, wow.
Where's Errol gonna be?
He's not here tonight.
Oh, he is here.
You get here on time.
They're taking over tomorrow.
You're welcome.
We're doing our payroll as of tomorrow.
Do you just feel the code?
No, just email it to me. So I'm just getting all the numbers they have in town.
Hey, you're welcome. Do you want to copy something? Does relate to the water work?
And that's not the part we want.
Okay, let me...
I can suffer my way through it. As to your experience now.
So that's usually my question. Sometimes I get like something else.
Remember items.
No, don't bother.
No, no, Ben wants $2,000. We haven't even yet settled on what the payroll period is. Can we buy it by month? So, you know, every two weeks we're gonna get. He's totally able to give you the check. We have a calendar.
Oh, look at that, they get to.
It's gonna go around, it's gonna be a date.
It's good they wore a green hat.
Friday. All right, guys, if you want to get your friends.
United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming out. Uh, this is a workshop, it's on a regular town board meeting. I will entertain public comment, but please remember that it's supposed to be a simple and quick meeting tonight, so... Uh, Jim, I know you wanted to say something, so go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jim Blessing, Levin Buchanan Way, from Just Off, on Weatherwax Road. I was here a couple of months ago, and I had done a simply my well, and came back with a score of 32, which was very alarming. Uh, I came to this meeting, and I proposed that the water line be extended from Snyder's Corners Road up to my driveway, which is Buchanan Way. Both families on that driveway would like to have, uh, public water. Um, shortly after this meeting I attended, um, the county came and retested, re-sampled my well, and they came back with zero reading. Now, 32 and zero, I don't know about you, but to me, that's quite a disparity. So, um, last Friday, the testing lab themselves came to my house, did the sampling. It's kind of a tiebreaker. Uh, and I closely watched the lab technician, he did exactly what I did. Not done the test before. You're underwater five minutes, put on latex gloves, and fill two little plastic bottles and cap them. That's the entire sampling. So he came and sampled my well, and, uh, he said it would be another, probably two weeks or so before we get the results. Since the last meeting, there was proposal made and a recommendation made to Keith and the engineering firm that that extension, uh, go up to my driveway, Buchanan Way. And my assumption is that was predicated on my score of 32 parts per trillion, which is a pretty high score. If the test comes back from the lab and it's zero, uh, tonight I'll offer my apologies for taking up your time. But if it comes back contaminated, I'm gonna push for continuing that water line, the one-tenth of a mile. Um, it's three driveways down from my house. Uh, since the last meeting, I talked with two veterans, real estate brokers. They both confirmed that, um, if you're going to sell your house, by law, you have to disclose any major defects, such as a contaminated well. Built it or not, you have to disclose that your well is contaminated. I don't know about you, but if I have a choice of three houses to buy, one has a contaminated well, guess which one I'm not gonna buy? So, um, I would ask, I will bring the results back, while Keith will know the results and Bob will know the results once they come back from that third test. I'm trusting the third test implicitly because there's no break in the chain of custody. The people sampling it or the people who are testing it. Um, interestingly enough, there are two other families that scored above the cutoff level. The county came in and tested theirs, and lo and behold, they came back at zero. So I don't know, I'm not pointing any fingers, um, but having the lab come in and do it themselves, I have confidence in that testing process. Um, I appreciate the ability to do that, so, um, in summary, I would hope that, um, you would consider running that line the other tenth of a mile up to my house, whether or without contamination, but definitely if it's still contaminated.
Thank you. I... I want to point out that we have two options of either running up Weatherwax or down 66. If we go down 66, going to your house isn't an additional expense. Right now, their time is gonna be about $1,000 per household, just to be in the water district, if you're in Algonquin Estates. To run it to two houses, can you imagine how much that would be? So, that's what the town's looking at. And, uh, honestly, if this is the price of the water district, I don't think it's attainable.
I appreciate the challenges you go through financially, the tough place you're in, in terms of making those decisions. Thank you.
Anyone else that can speak?
Well, Greg Hadlock, uh, Craig Gordon. Um, continuing what Jim was saying, again, I have no idea, I know on the agenda, there's something with the engineering report for the water district, and I assume the route as you described. I don't know how the federal funds play into it. I certainly know that there, the, uh, the investment bill that was passed in Congress has a whole lot of money for PFAS areas. I don't know how that factors in, if that $1,000, yeah, it looks big to a town, but is that money available from federal parties? Certainly, I hope that gets looked at as part of any route you decide. And if the money is there, um, and it's for areas where there is PFAS contamination, take advantage of it.
We're trying every route we can, I'll be honest with you. In fact, on the agenda tonight is, uh, reaching out to our federal and state representatives, but we'll talk about that when we get to it. Anyone else?
Are you gonna talk about what the plan is, like with this water district? Is that, I don't wanna get into it, if you're gonna talk about it, I guess.
No, we're not really talking about the plan itself tonight. Uh, we're talking about reaching out for federal and state funding from our congressmen and our senators. That's what's on the agenda. We have the plan, uh, the plan is a lot more money than I thought it'd be. Part of it is where you live.
Oh, yeah, that's my question.
We did happen to an additional, uh, portion of the study to include your area. But I'm afraid all the news I've gotten is close to $1,000 per home, just to be in the district so far. Unless we find some.
You clarify $1,000 per home, per year?
Per year.
Right. To pay for the bond?
Yes.
Right. Not just $1,000, one shot deal?
No.
Just clarifying.
Plus the individual connection.
Right.
Correct.
And your fee for actual reuse.
And how many years are we talking about for the $1,000 a year?
We don't know yet. We don't know yet. It depends on the amount of grant funding we get, and how much we can get in. We'll determine how much it actually costs the taxpayers within that water district. But that's not determined yet, because we can't file till July. Which brings me to our...
Where's for the public discussion?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, is there, like, any drawings or anything of that plan? Is that out yet?
Yeah, there's some preliminary drawings.
Is that upstairs?
Yeah.
Is, okay. Alright, 'cause I haven't been in town. Before we, uh, close the public comment period, I just want to say with regard to our YouTube Live, I tested out our system, and I sent an email to everybody recommending that the town buy the equipment. Uh, the camera's $79, and then a laptop. You don't have to buy a new laptop if you have a laptop or computer available. But just the camera and the tripod are the only things the town would have to invest in.
I had Tiffany put that on our agenda.
And I think... Oh, it's on tonight?
No, tonight's a workshop.
For April.
Oh, for April.
We can't do it tonight. But on our regular town board meeting, it's on the agenda.
I didn't know if, I mean, it's such a minor expense, I didn't know if it had to be formally approved in the letter.
No, the reason I had tonight's meeting is because I knew a couple of these things were gonna take some time, I didn't want...
Got it.
Originally on our...
Next month.
Next agenda, I moved into a workshop to try and make next month's meeting. If you look at our agenda, it's already packed.
Understood.
So... Okay. This portion is the earmarked, uh, money. I have... I know that there's a limited time to go to our congressman and our senators and ask for federal money. But honestly, I'm not 100% sure it's worth it, especially if we have to pay $2,000 for each application to be done by, uh, LeBarge. If it's something we could do in-house, I'd be all for it, but, uh, I know it's a lot to ask Tiffany to do. What's your feeling, Andy? Have you dealt with this before?
Yes. And these are generally difficult to obtain, but you're much, you're in a much better place in terms of having a qualified consultant prepare those applications. They know how they need to be prepared for maximum opportunity. Generally coordinate this fairly well. It's often viewed as, and not to downplay $2,000 as an expense, but it's an investment and an opportunity to get larger grant money, which reduces down the overall cost of the water district extension project. It's diff- all I can tell you in my experience, it's difficult to get these put together in-house in a way that maximizes the municipality's opportunity. And that's simply saying they're difficult to get to begin with, but to maximize that opportunity, that investment in a consultant is sometimes viewed as a wise investment to maximize the opportunity. It's difficult on these grant applications to handle them.
Well, Mr. Delgado's been out here twice to our town, and he pledged help. I haven't heard a word from Christine Gillbrand on anything since I became supervisor, so I'm not sure there's a lot of help coming that way, but...
And we don't have to do all three either, like, we can choose just to do Delgado's application, we can choose to do two of them, we can choose three of them. So like, it's not just, um, they're just saying that there's three that we could be applying for and might increase our chances. But there's no guarantee, because after our congressional leaders approve it at the state level, and then goes to the federal level to get into the pot of federal projects, to see what's going to get approved or not.
Well, I was gonna offer to try and contact Mr. Delgado and fill him out and see if it's something worth pursuing, and I, we could probably have something ready for our next town board meeting, if you wanted me to go that route, but, uh...
Because one of them, I forget which way it went, whether it was Delgado or her, still hasn't been decided what was gonna be eligible, right?
So Delgado's just came out, and we'll be fine with that, I did talk to Ben yesterday. Um, so he thinks we have money for all of them. They don't remember Delgado's due date, it might not be until after our next town board meeting, but I know Schumer's was definitely, it is like next week or something, so it was definitely like... That's also the interesting thing, it's going to the ultimate thing, cost of money, but everyone has a little bit of a different application, and everyone has a different timeline.
Well, what's the plan of the board, I'll do whatever you want to do.
What's, you're, because you still have to have support letters and all this other stuff. Are you comfortable with that?
So...
You got these.
I think I can work with Ben to get those pieces. I just don't know if I have that ex... I mean, if it was just attached, you know, the plan and attach all of these pieces and fill in some information, but like, the support and kind of background, I don't think I have that knowledge to actually do it.
And I'll offer this as well for your consideration. I know Congressman Delgado did take an interest and has actively involved the village of Huesic Falls on their PFAS and PFOA issues. So if you contact his office, they know what they're doing in terms of PFOA contamination in groundwater and alternate water supplies. This is not anything new to them. He has taken an active interest in Huesic Falls. So that, given that you're dealing with the same type of issue in groundwater and water supply wells here, this is something that I think you can probably work with his office on, maybe with some support.
His office has actually talked to me probably six times since I've been supervisor. I haven't heard from anybody else.
I'll give him credit, his office is, has been involved and has been coordinating a lot with the village on their PFOA issues.
It's also important to note that two of his staff members are post-residents.
That's important too. And now, quite frankly, is the time, because as we know, his district is gonna be changing. So if there's an opportunity to use his office, this is it.
I agree with Andy that a professional presentation has a much higher likelihood of success with this.
Well...
Because they tend to be very...
I'd be happier if we could do more applications, it's 10 to all three, but they all have their own application process.
Could this be used with some of that funding money that we're using?
Yeah.
I think we should do it, pay for it.
Alright, then we'll get a hold of them tomorrow.
Okay, vote on the actual resolution.
You need me to read the whole thing?
What are we looking at?
Huh?
What are we looking at?
This resolution, it's, uh...
I see it to authorization, so we just submit. Just the first.
Whereas, uh, the United States House of Representatives and the United States Senate has opened and called for applications for FY 2023 community project funding programs, and whereas a community project's funding program provides an opportunity for high priority public health and safety welfare projects to complete for federal appropriations. Is that enough to go on? Now, we have resolved that the town post-residential supervisors hereby authorized to undertake all actions to execute and file the application for federal assistance through the community project funding via Congressman Delgado, Schumer, Gillbrand, in a, in assistance in the creation of a water district number two, to protect the health and welfare and safety of the town residents. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, thanks.
Art, if I could suggest, before you move on from that, that was the resolution to authorize the submission of the applications for that funding. LeBarge also presented to you a contract addendum. Board should probably entertain a motion to authorize a supervisor to execute the contract addendum in an amount not to exceed 2,000 as set forth in the contract addendum. Put some limits in this.
Motion.
2,000 per applicant.
Per application. Or only doing the one application anyway.
For each community project.
This indicates the contract amount shall be increased by lowering the rates up to 2,000 plus reimbursable expenses. Oh, for each community, you're correct.
Okay.
So it could be $6,000.
Could be 6,000 if you applied at all.
But if there's different dates, and Delgado's the first one to go...
I think Delgado's the last one to go, if memory serves.
Okay.
Well, I'll talk to him tomorrow, and I'll have a better idea of which one we're gonna apply for.
Yep.
But this authorizes him to do it if we so, if he so chooses to do it. But he doesn't have to, he's not obligated to go ahead.
This would authorize the, such a motion would authorize a supervisor, the board would approve this, and authorize the supervisor to execute this contract addendum?
Correct.
Is it, then, this addendum is for potentially up to 6,000, 2,000 per grant application?
Understood.
Okay.
But just, did we have to keep on going? Like when she talks to Ben, say like, okay, maybe we just want to do more?
Well, I'll call you on the phone before I do anything.
Yeah, you can.
I'll talk to everybody after I talk to Ben.
If you make it clear that you're authorizing the contract addendum for $2,000, up to $2,000 plus reimbursable expenses per grant application, then that's clear that that's how this was interpreted, and that you have the ability to identify what grant applications you want going forward. So, thanks, Senator.
Alright. Thank you, everyone.
So there was all that motion, as imagined?
Right.
And that was offered by?
I moved it.
And seconded it? Then there'll be a vote.
Right.
On favor?
Aye.
I wasn't here to sound any more obvious than it is. Alright, our next one is unhavocable buildings, and Lee has a...
Figure above lunch should go. Yes, thank you. My name is Lee Ken, I'm a resident of 317 Snake Hill Road. Uh, I am not speaking in the capacity as any kind of unofficial representative of the town, just simply as a concerned citizen. Having, having witnessed over the years, uh, there's been a bit of a struggle going on with how do we deal with these unhavocable dwellings in town, which we know oftentimes just continue to crumble and return to the elements? And, um, there has been, uh, there have been attempts in the past to deal with this through legislative means, and I don't know if I should say a one-size-fits-all application, but, uh, there has been an ongoing struggle as it deals with the, uh, with the issue of unhavocable buildings. I have, I think I have two more copies here of what I'm about to propose this evening. If anybody from the general public wants a copy of this, it's available. Um, so what I have done is I've tried to stand back and look at this from a problem-solving perspective. How would you design a solution to the unhavocable buildings issue? Mr. Gilchrist was, uh, was kind enough about six months ago to bring representatives from the town of Brunswick, where they have, uh, is it a town law or a resolution that they have?
It's a town local law.
A town local law? So, as I understand, to this point, we do not have a town local law or a resolution to deal with this at this time, and I think that we are, we are in the capacity of entertaining a concept as to how to deal with this, and that's what I wanted to do this evening. Let me put a little bit of a talking point up here for you, and we can get on with things. So the unhavocable dwellings have obviously been an issue, not only due to their unsightly appearance, but they oftentimes can present a public safety concern. And that's something where, um, obviously the town would take an interest in something that is a public safety concern. In the past, as I recall, there have been attempts to resolve this problem through either property seizures or construction mandates and such. And it would only seem that trying to do that in the face of property owners who may already very well be under the stress of financial or physical issues, to impose upon them such mandates is... is, is something which may just stir up more trouble than to provide a favorable outcome. So I believe that this approach deserves a bit of a measured approach and overall an inducement to the property owners who have unhavocable dwellings to actually do something about this. So what I've come up with is an evaluation system, which, um, I would propose that would be handled through the corner enforcement office. Now, I'm reluctant right at the very beginning, because that's a very busy office already. And to impose additional stress on the building inspector is something that has to be taken into consideration, and it has been, in that we may find provisions within this proposal to be able to find, um, means of financial income for the town in order to offset the position of a part-time employee. Uh, but that's certainly not going to be developed or opinion on, or make any kind of conclusions. Getting right to the gist of the matters here. What we're gonna find with unhavocable dwellings, generally speaking, are physical conditions that can be identifiable. The intention here is to take the personal effect of judging as to whether an unhavocable building, dwelling is, uh, is something that is subject to mandates or not, and to put it into a quantitative state by doing an assessment as to what the physical characteristics might very well be with any given unhavocable dwelling. Take, for example, inadequate well covering. Well, if it's, if it's an old-time well without a cover on it, that's obviously a safety concern. Or if it's a drilled or driven well without a cap on it, that's an additional concern. If we have open pits on a, on a property, that's a fairly serious concern as well. As you'll see, can you see back there? Alright. What I've attempted to do is to arbitrarily, but not complicitously, arbitrarily offer some, um, numbers along a point system. that work generally along a scale. The inspector on a property being able to visually assess a situation is going to be able to apply a reasonable quantitative number for any given violation that, that he's going to find on a property. And any place where I have denoted here the asterisk, we'll see that, that causes for a different scale of discrepancy which would cause for there to be a more frequent inspection of the property. Tripping hazards near the structure, obviously a problem. Restricted access to emergency personnel in a form of foliage, barriers, an unkept accessway, fire department first responders, et cetera, they're taken into consideration there. Broken windows, decayed house chimney foundation, unsecured accessway, rotten, rotten and bowed floors, bowed roofs, all the things which would characteristically denote that a building is unhavocable or is in need of some kind of immediate repairs in order to bring it back to unhavocable state is quantitatively assessed. But what do we do with that? So if we have, if we have, for example, I'm going to take the liberty here of putting a couple of examples up here which just happen to be like the bookends of this situation. And these are respectively at number 284 and number 675 Snake Hill Road. Now, this property at 284 is, is a high scoring unhavocable dwelling and consistent with this evaluation system. This is going to score really quite high and necessitate if this resolution is considered and adopted. This, this kind of a structure is going to be seen as something which needs to have some kind of action taken about it. This, this structure though, has just recently come on under the ownership of the county. So it's, it kind of applies, but yet it doesn't apply. I'm using it as an example here. We certainly have a number of other unhavocable dwellings in the town. I'm only estimating that we have maybe about 50. So probably a considerably higher number than we might ordinarily think about how many unhavocable dwellings we have, but we probably have almost 50. And some of them are in really, really bad condition and the owner is obviously not inclined to do something about it. Now, on the opposite end of the spectrum, this is number 675 Snake Hill Road. Now, the person that owns this property grew up there and he has his own residence behind it. He's, he sees this residence every day. There's no restrictions for emergency personnel, there's no broken windows, there's no open accessways, there's no sagging roofs or anything. This building even though it's probably unhavocable with regard to the, the amount of time that has been left vacant is something which would score very, very low. It, it might not even score a 20 on the scale. So it would be something where quantitatively you would say, this needs action. This, leave it alone, leave it alone. Doesn't, it doesn't need any intervention. So the point system is something that I think may very well take, you know, the personality factor out of assessing as to whether a building is unhavocable or not. It puts it, it puts it into an area where we can really measure something. Now, how to create a resolution or a town law is something that's quite frankly out of my purview. But I'm, I'm just presuming that in order to create this town law or resolution, we're first going to have to define what an unhavocable dwelling is. I think that's going to be no major challenge. We would also need to be able to conduct some kind of a search of the town, a general scan of the town to get a relatively good ideas to how many unhavocable dwellings that there are and what their address is. We might even be able to elicit the, the use of the town highway department because they're out there all the time anyway. They might be able to help us with scanning where these buildings are. And I would presume that if and when we might be able to create a chart of, of buildings that has some or more of these violations and what their addresses are, we can determine who the owners are and be able to notify the owners that the town has passed a, a local law and to be able to provide to that property owner a copy of that local law and to provide also to that owner of that property a notification that, or I'm going to say a request that they would fill out a self-assessment of that property themselves, which is basically like offering an olive branch to someone. So it's that, you know, you don't have to go in and hammer on them first. You, you offer to them a request to do a self-examination of their building, return that back to the town. And we know that there's going to be a high percentage of people that are just going to say, to hell with it, I'm not going to do it. You would expect that right to begin with. But at least it's an olive branch that would be extended in, in good faith at the onset. I'm just recommending that. And then the, upon receiving or not receiving a request back from the property owner, the town would then have the discretion to act upon its findings with regard to the, to the point system and notify the property owner that commensurate to the, the findings on that property, a schedule of examinations on that or inspections on that property would take place and approximately at what time, often in the future, they would take place. And again, in extending an olive branch, it would probably be quite advisable to give property owners a year or however much time that they need in order to make a, a response back. Because we realize that most people who, most people who are in this situation have a physical or a financial situation and that they're under the burden anyway. And a lot of these people just need that little, that urge to make them come to a decision. I have to do something about this property or I have to sell it or I have to forfeit it or something. I think there's a lot of people that are just kind of like hanging on and waiting for that urge. And this might very well be the way to inspire people to do something about their unhavocable properties. I can see where it's possible, but you're going to have to, you're going to rely upon counsel to make a determination as to how the, the point system would get connected to issuing a levy on the property owner. That is to say that when we have situations where there's an obvious high score and, and a high potential for, for adverse reactions to take place on that property, it should be, it should be inspected more frequently and the levy imposed on it should be commensurate with the point score that has been assessed to it. I'm only skimming over some details here. I'm just trying to get the, the general gist out there as to what this resolution is, is trying to convey. And I think that we might be looking at three general categories of unhavocable dwellings. Those which score very low, conditioned green flag, an annual inspection, leave it alone. And then when we start seeing things where, oh, it's starting to really slip, it's starting to look a little dangerous and such, we might be looking there at a semi-annual inspection and that the fee for the inspection, fee for the inspection would be commensurate with the point findings. And in cases like what we saw at number 284, where we get into a 50-plus rate and that, that, that one will score as high as 200. So you're looking at a high score, a high levy on the, on the, on the fee for the inspection plus a far more frequent inspection interval of real serious inducement for people who have unhavocable dwellings such as this, to do something about it. So I've just skipped over this kind of quickly and I would like to know if you have any questions or comments.
Is it a possibility to, to put levy fines like that on abandoned homes?
So in general, the town does have, in a local law, the ability to impose some kind of cost or penalty and if that's not paid by the property owner to re-levy that on the next round of real property taxes. That's, you mentioned Brunswick earlier. In their local law, there are certain expenses associated with that program that if unpaid do get re-leaved and that's presented to the town board in the fall. They formally re-levy that amount to be put on the next year's real property tax.
Okay, well, in the case to the left there, that's going to auction.
So we, we can, if the board is intent on, on considering this, certainly all that, very well put together, can be reviewed, taken under advisement and figure out how the economics work. You're right, there's a quirk there if the county has taken the real property.
Well, it took, how many years to get, I mean, this building has been in that state for at least 10 years. It took that long to get to auction. You can levy on these people all you want if they just say, screw it, I'm never going to do anything with it anyway.
Then it's up to the county, but when the municipality re-leaves, understand, the county will pay the real property tax. The town is made whole on that. It's the county that then incurs that deficit, if you will. And the county's remedy is to foreclose through the tax foreclosure proceeding, take the title, auction it and recover what they can through the auction sale. But the municipality is made whole through the re-leve process.
And in that instance, is the town in, in this capacity able to retrieve any of the inspection fees that, that would have been due to the town?
That's something that we have to take a look at. I, I know, I'll use Brunswick as the example, okay? Yes, I was here several months ago. When we put that together, that takes it with a different approach. They have a vacant building registry that has certain fees, annual fees associated with that. And the whole intent on that approach is to try to encourage what are currently vacant properties to become inhabited properties to get beneficial use. And it's an economic incentive because there's an annual fee to have a vacant property. So in that case, if that annual fee is not paid, it is re-leaved. There's also a vacant property maintenance requirement. And if the property is not being maintained, this is not structural, I'll get to that in a moment. This was really property maintenance in terms of overgrown brush trees, broken items on the property, things like that.
I got you.
Then, then a notice is sent to the property owner to basically maintain your property and if they fail to do it, the town sends a contractor out there and maintains the property and there's a cost for that and it's billed to the property owner. And if they fail to pay, it goes through the same re-leve system. That's how Brunswick's addressed it. There may be other options here. I've not seen a point system in the property maintenance arena. I've seen it in what amounts to a nuisance arena where if a town can say, your, your property is constituting a nuisance and we're conjoining you from continuing that nuisance. It's a little bit different. That's not to say it couldn't happen here, we just have to review that. In terms of the inspections, I'd have to take a look at that to determine in this arena, property maintenance, whether those are recoverable, but we could review that. And then the last point about it being unsafe. I know Brunswick has, I know many municipalities have, and I believe Postonville has as well, a separate section of the code dealing with unsafe buildings or structures. That's handled differently. That is a public safety issue and there's a whole process to be going through to determine if a structure is unsafe and that you generally require the property owner to make it into a safe condition. And if it's not able to be, to demolish the structure. And if the property owner fails to do it, the town does it and goes through the same re-leve process. So there, there's a few things here. There's vacant buildings, sometimes these are called zombie properties because of the impact on the surrounding neighborhood. There's property maintenance issues and then there's unsafe building issues. And if the board wants to move in that direction, we can review your proposal to see if that's something that's happening. But there are mechanisms to, to try to cover the town economically. The town does initially pay those costs. And then if unpaid by the property owner, we review this proposal to see if that's legally able to be re-leaved against the property. It, it, it is done in other circumstances and once re-leaved, then the county will make the town whole. But we could review that if the board wants to, wants to proceed.
I think that there's a lot of good ideas there, but before, in, in many ways, this seems to be code enforcement administration. And I'd just like to ask Tracy, how does this fit into what you're already doing in terms of getting reports of, of building that, a vacant building and all? What do you do about it now? And how much activity of this type do you actually have to do? And have you heard about throughout the town?
I've had a lot of complaints, I gotta be honest. I did have a couple where, one of them, Garfield Road where part of their building fell, fell down. I had an agreement with the owner that he, I gave him 90 days to get rid of it and he did it. But he's a guy that did it. My concern would be that what happens when it goes to auction in the county and whoever buys it buys it, it's just a piece of property and it still stays like that and they don't do anything to it. Now we're doing it twice, I think. That would be my concern with that. Not that it can't be done, but some people buy stuff to sit on it.
What do you mean, Tracy?
That building on the left.
Yeah, but what do you mean it happened, it gone twice?
What's that?
What do you mean by it going through it twice? Like if someone buys it from Florida, buys the land.
Yeah, you buy it at an auction with no provisions to demolish it. Now we got to address that the second time.
With a new owner.
The new owner.
That's what you're saying.
Gotcha. And then we start that process over again. That would be my concern.
And at one point, we did take a look at New York State's property maintenance law, which is pretty specific about height of grass and all kinds of things. It gives you the authority to go in and issue fines for leaky plumbing and all kinds of things. So is there really an additional need for us to be doing this kind of thing when there's already a whole series of laws in place that do give us this authority already?
I've had, I've had very limited luck in this court with property owners neglecting their property. I wrote appearance tickets, they come in and then they got five or six letters from the judge saying, I'm going to issue a warrant for your arrest. And then it was, I may issue a warrant and then the case just got dropped. And that's, I've got five tickets upstairs that I didn't, not five tickets, five appearance tick, appearances that they didn't show and nobody will go down. I love the authority to do it, I can write the ticket, but I can't. The sheriffs, unless the judge says it, unless the judge orders the warrant and from what I understand, it doesn't, it has no merit. It's not a, it's not a violent crime or it's not a.
So what we have now isn't really supported that with much energy by the courts and there's no indication that they would support this anymore, I would think.
I've had very little luck with it and I've tried. I've spent probably six nights, six court nights here waiting for the results of the, the, the one that seems to be the problem and the property is still in terrible condition. We've been there with the sheriffs and the sheriffs called me to go there and, you know, if they want to ignore the court and the judge wants to allow them to do it, it's over, the game's over. We've got people doing it right down the street now because there's nothing else to do. Nothing I can do. I can write them tickets, but if they don't show up.
But this would be different in that we wouldn't be taking it to the judge. We'd just be assigning taxes to them. The, the idea with what he's trying to do is to incentivize people to either fix it up or get rid of it. And if you get rid of it, the hope is that someone will buy it cheap and fix it up.
And if you get rid of it, the hope is that someone will buy it cheap and fix it up. So that's the point. And if they don't wanna fix it up, they just have to pay a penalty.
Well, the obstacle we have right now are, there's no teeth in our justice system to enforce that.
This current law.
I like the idea of the point system, because it's not personal. You're not having to make a personal judgment out of it. And get the finger pointing at the building inspector, well, you just don't like me, you're coming after me. This has a process, and it either is or it isn't.
On the other side of it is, though, some people just can't afford to do what we're gonna require them to do. And that's gonna create a hardship for somebody that, I mean, I can see if they're neglecting their property intentionally. But if they're on the bottom right now because of something, and we're gonna try.
Have we come across a lot of those situations?
I'm just saying that if this comes up, you probably are.
Well, I mean, when I see, just on my opinion, and I'm not.
If we go looking for them, you're gonna.
Well, I'm not looking for them. I think I know what building he's talking about, it's Nick Hill. I'm thinking about that house on 150 that's been burnt out for eight years, maybe? That's not going anywhere. There's the one on 351 behind the lenses that's falling in on itself. So if that's not an issue, people don't have the money, that's a neglect, those are neglected properties. So if you have an issue where you have a little old lady who can't afford her repairs, certainly, that's a different story.
How do you distinguish?
That's, that's why you write laws, smart laws.
Yeah, you know.
Because I don't know how many old ladies, I mean, there was a woman here who had the problem, and she wouldn't fix it, and that was her right, too.
To answer your question, I diligently tried to get two individuals to be held accountable, and it just didn't work. And they should be. They have a health and safety insurance that's creating on their property. The windows are missing, there's propane tanks, oxygen tanks, leaking oil, everything, and I can't get anybody to do anything about it.
Am I right, Andy, though, when I say that? Because I know I might be wrong by that, so. But when I, I understand what Tracy's saying. Today, we've gotta go to the judge, and the judge, I don't think the legal system allows people to go get bench warrants anymore, so I'm not pointing fingers at the judges. But wouldn't this ultimately put the pain on the homeowner to either fix it or get rid of it? We wouldn't be dragging in front of court, we'd just be saying. No, you're correct, and again, I'll use the Brunswick example. I knew this one because I wrote it.
Right.
None of this goes into Brunswick Town Court. This is all handled at the town level, principally through the building department, and then through the assessor's office on the request for the re-levy. So now, there's a penalty provision in here. I'll give you a hand if someone's got a vacant property. And by the way, this one was drafted for purposes of vacant properties? Because when you have a situation where someone is living in the property, they simply don't have the economic resources to do some repairs, but it also is not an unsafe condition? That wouldn't apply. It's not a vacant property, it's being inhabited. It's not unsafe, creating a safety issue. It's just they're doing the best they can. And those, if the lawn is growing up, the property maintenance issues, there are ways to deal with that. This law would, in Brunswick, wouldn't apply because it's not a vacant property, it's inhabited. So in that respect, it's, you try to work with homeowners in that situation if it's, if they're doing the best that they can. Here, if you've got, a property is being lived in, and again, it's not unsafe, then that does give the building department in the town the ability to work with them. The real issue that arises is when you've got either an unsafe condition, and there are ways to deal with those, or you've got a vacant property that's falling in on itself. There's ways to deal with those. Or you've got a completely unsafe building, based on an engineering inspection, where it either needs immediate repair, or it's beyond that, and it needs demolition. And then there's a process to go through generally in front of this board to determine, you've gotta take that building down. And if you don't, the town will, and re-levy and be made whole. So there's ways to do that for that situation where it's in, if someone's living there, and they're doing the best they can. I often say this to folks, too. Well, what do you got zoning for? What do you got building maintenance for? These things are not designed, in my opinion, to make things look pretty. They're to make things operate in the appropriate districts in town, and to make sure that they're safe. This is not something about wanting things to look pretty. So on your list, those are things that really deal with safety issues. They're appropriate. But if a house doesn't look real great, I don't like them living next to me. I don't like the way it looks. That's not what municipal laws are for. It's not designed to make things look pretty. It's to make things look, are safer.
That's what homeowners associations are for.
That's right, inhabitable, and if they're vacant, you can deal with that.
Well, we did have a situation on Plank Road a few years ago, and we took care of it. I mean, using the laws that we have in place.
Mm-hmm.
And I think somebody bought it, and I think they built a house there. So that's where I'm wondering, do we need anything new? Or is what we have sufficient? In all honesty, I see.
I'm not out on the streets. I don't hear, I don't hear the chatter, you know, we have 50 houses that have to come down, and people calling Town Hall desperately saying, you know, this is a real problem. I don't, I'm not in that loop, so I don't know if that's actually happening. You would hear it more than I would, but I just, in general philosophy, tend to try not to have laws if we don't need them. And that's, that's. So we can't enforce the laws that we got, which Tracy's alluded to. How can you enforce a new one? You know, people, if people don't wanna do it, they're just gonna not do it.
Financially.
And financially, if they don't have, you know, you can't get money out of rock. You know, it just doesn't happen. I mean, I like the idea, but is it just putting another match to the fire that the judge is gonna put no fear in anybody's mind?
This is a different, this is between the building inspector and the town board. It doesn't go to the judge.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, if somebody brought me to the judge, I'm scared. I'm gonna, yeah, yes, sir, what do you want me to do? There's millions of people out there that don't really give a damn. You know, and they're gonna thumb their nose at the judge.
Judge is the last to go.
And you know that.
It's hard to offer.
So if we can't enforce what we got on the books right now, I'm not saying, I mean, I like the idea, but how are you gonna enforce it?
The intent here is not to bring people before a judge. The intent here is to create a structure whereby financial liability on behalf of the homeowner is commensurate with a point binding. And that's gonna add up over a period of time. And the property owner's gonna see that quite immediately. And if they got a property that is in the high point range, and it's being, it's being levied for, because of the danger on its property is being levied at a high rate, four times per year, they're gonna feel that, and they're gonna be incentivized to say, you know, it's not habitable, it's becoming more and more of a liability than an asset. I gotta sell this thing, I gotta get rid of this, I gotta get off from under it. So it's an incentivization program to cause people to see the financial reality that they have. And unfortunately, I mean, some people are in desperate situations and probably scared to death, and just don't, just don't really know how to make a reasonable decision with a property of this description. And I can see instances where this kind of just gives them the push, you know? Do, sell this, get rid of this, get this burden off your shoulder.
So basically, it's, steadily increase their property taxes until they just can't do it anymore.
I don't know how to connect that.
Well, I mean, it's essentially the property tax.
I'm talking about a levy that is associated with a fee per inspection.
Because you have to collect that money. What if they don't pay?
It continues to add.
Yeah, but then you have to go to the judge to collect. They don't care, they don't care.
How that financial connection is made and determined and enforced is out of my purview. And this is why I'm asking for professional assistance here with my consideration and propulsion. What most of us generally agree is a relatively sound idea.
May I ask, how successful has it been in Brunswick? And have they come across these situations where people are like, I don't care, they can hit me with all the p j v on, where it does not pain?
My recollection, when we were here last summer, we had the assessor and the assistant in the assessor's office, and they reported that it's been fairly successful. It's been, and again, Brunswick's is tailored toward vacant properties, not properties where people are living, that's run down. And they've had fairly good success with even vacant properties being registered. There's an annual fee. It's, again, a fee that ratchets it up over time because that provides the economic incentive to get that property either sold or inhabited, so it's no longer vacant. The real key that Brunswick took on was the issue of vacant properties that tend to get run down. And they wanted to address that. And there were a handful in town. If my memory serves me right, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 to 70 parcels, somewhere in that neighborhood. And they've had fairly good success with people actually coming in and registering. And there's an annual fee for that. And there's an incentive to try to make repairs, to get it and how to get it on the market. They adopted their law in 2019. It was filed the middle of the year, so since 2019. And they've had fairly good success with that approach.
Can you express any relative percentage of those individuals who elected to just sell the property and get off from under the burden?
I don't have that information, no.
Andy, is the enforcement vehicle a tax levy increase?
It is, so the way Brunswick did that is there's the annual fee. And if you fail to pay that, a notice is sent. And if you fail to pay that, it is then re-leveyed. So the assessor will put together a list of unpaid fees, both registration as well as property maintenance fees. And it's presented to the town board in the fall, and they approve the re-levy, and it's put on the next year's tax bill.
As a member of the assessment review board here, I can see if this, if this happens, a few people filing their proper complaints, and if you have any more cases to hear, that's one for the air.
But, right, but what the Board of Assessment Review really functions for is if the assessment is changed, you come in and agree with that assessment. This is not changing the assessment at all. This is simply adding a dollar amount to your next year's property tax bill. It's like not paying your water bill.
I've been doing this a long time, and I, that's a lecture I give to people about the tax structure. And I say, see the town board, that's not our issue.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, it will increase the work for the assessor as well as the review board. I'm not complaining about that, because everyone's really smooth right now. But there could be implications, there could be complaints. We would dismiss it because, quite frankly, it's not about the assessment, it's about the tax levy itself.
I agree with you, though. It would mean some more work for two departments primarily, the town, building departments and the assessor. Phil, what do you mean by that? Are you saying that someone would come and say, my neighbor's house is a mess, I want a lower tax? Or are you saying when they fix it up, or what were you thinking?
It could work either way, to be honest. But you're supposed to do comparables, supposed to bring real comparables. I only know this because I was one that succeeded in doing that in the 80s. And then somebody asked me to be on the board, and I've been on the census.
One, and then push on the board, so they could do it again.
Really, do you really keep your bill down? But it could be the party. All I'm saying is, if they come in, it's gonna add to Betsy's load, okay? To have to explain additional people. If we have a total of 50, maybe it's just a handful. But trust me, the kind of things we hear about they're gonna file a complaint, and everyone has a right to file a complaint, and maybe invalid. That's for us to determine, frankly, and then the courts, if they don't like what we say. But it will add to the burden on, not just the building department, but it will add to the burden of the assessors.
Gotcha, good point.
To be fair, I want to support something that David said, though, and I agree with him. You know, let's, we've got a complex world already. And adding more complexity is something that's, you wanna bite that end of the bullet. To be fair, this, I think, would become a little more complicated with respect that it needs to have some kind of a mechanism in it so that it's calibratable to whatever area it's being applied to. Like in the Hamlet district, for example, where you got a higher population density. This is gonna be more important. But when you get farther out, in the outer reaches, where people wanna be out there, because that's where they wanna be, I would see where this would have generally, you know, less applicability out there, where people just pretty much want to be left alone. So that's something else, which, in all fairness.
That would be, then you're talking about.
Pardon me?
Then you're talking about buildings that are currently inhabited.
I'm talking about, this addresses unhavitable buildings.
Yes, that have become, but there's nobody living in them. I think that's what Mr. Delquist was talking about.
Right.
It's two different levels. And if you're talking about people up on the hill who own property that have let it fall into just repair, and there's safety issues, and there's nobody living there, that's one thing, as opposed to somebody who's living.
Yes, and, and quite frankly, you would, you would generally feel that those people out there deserve a little bit more heartfelt consideration. They're, you know, they probably don't have a hell of a lot of financial wherewithal to begin with, and maybe that's, maybe that's why they're out there. And that's, you know, more power to them. So I'm just mentioning this, just to be fair, in that where we see that something like this would probably have a lot more stringent applicability in the Hamlet area. Might require some backing off when we get out to some of the outlying regions.
But then it's not objective.
To your point, it makes it more complicated.
Exactly, it's not objective. Your point was to be objective, and then if you're gonna have one standard for down here and one standard for up there.
You're right, and I don't know how to deal with that problem. And that's why I'm appealing to the people who are more adept with it.
From my point of view, I can see okay about the vacant buildings, and perhaps that has worked in Brunswick and everything, and maybe that's a good idea. I've been on the hill forever. There's, I can see that it's either people that don't have the fund, they're handicapped, or they're gonna be confrontational. That's the way it's gonna go. So for living in a building, and then you're gonna try and put another fee or a fine or a tax on top of somebody that's already bound and out.
This is called the unhavitable abandoned dwellings, is what we're talking about.
Abandoned, that's what I was trying to say. That's what we're trying to say.
That we're all agreed on.
Because you're not what he's living.
But those unhavitable dwellings are owned by someone. Someone has, someone has a deed to that, who may be under financial, physical hardship. There's something, there's a good term that we all know about in the legal world. It's called decorum. And everybody who is involved in law enforcement realizes that there is decorum associated with the application of the whole spectrum of our laws.
So you don't wanna find anybody that's there? They are totally uninhabited, abandoned, whatever?
I'm all for decorum.
Okay.
Tough nut to crack. You told me not to be long-winded, now. I asked, I didn't tell. No, that was excellent, I was trying, that was excellent. All right, are we done?
You don't tell, any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, those are the only two things we had on our agenda tonight. We are gonna have an executive session. They're both personnel matters.
Can I refer back to your applications? And that COVID money that we got to use for that application?
Yeah, I know, but still, I mean, you keep biting that apple, huh? And pushing the apple forward. I know.
$250,000 don't go far, but if you can take, invest $6,000 on it, and hopefully get something back, I mean, that's a good investment.
Well, I'm happy to report to the board. Honestly, I won't do it without commenting anybody here, but I.
But I didn't know, I didn't know if the COVID, you were talking about more money. If that COVID money could be used for it, there's a little bit of it.
It can be.
It's a good investment.
I just, I have more faith in Galileo than I do Jemini.
Yeah, but it doesn't hurt to hook the application. If they don't act on it, it's a loss. With the possibility of. The advantage went, well, the $2,000 in a year.
I'll reach out to all the.
So wait, you've been making a motion to go through this?
Oh, I did a motion, we always. Yeah, I need a motion down in there. I'm not gonna say.